I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we called meeting order, but before we get to our regular business Bill Dunkle, I told Bill that we would let him come up, he's got another meeting to get to. So Stephanie, if you and the... I'm not sure what your title is, are you Chief of Police, is that your title?
Yes.
Okay, if the Chief of Police of Rockville will come up and tell us what you have, well, that way he can get on going and get to his other meeting.
Sure.
Well, come on up guys.
We have an application for the use of opioid funds to purchase drug testing strips. Attached to the application is a list of the different tests that will be... that can be recognized through these testing strips. And Bill's here with me to, if you have any questions or concerns.
I told him, I'm not sure who it was I was speaking to the other...
Ian.
What was it?
Ian.
Yes, I think it was Ian. It's not typical that we would require you to come to present these things. We really give all that independence and that decision making to the LCC. The only thing we've not done, because state wouldn't allow us to do that, was to turn over the opioid checks, the LCC to spend as they choose. We have to approve those things, but I can't imagine either of us second guessing you guys once you made a decision that this is the grant that you seek for. I hate to take your time. I appreciate your coming, but Steph, I just want you to know, Steph, unless we have some reason, I don't see us ever questioning a decision that the LCC board makes. And so if he has convinced you that it's a work, well, good use of that money, and you come tell us that your board has decided to do that, I can't imagine us not going along with that.
Yes.
So feel free to, I mean, bring anybody you want to bring, anytime. But I know they're all busy people, but just don't feel you have to.
Okay.
Unless there's some overriding thing, I can't imagine us even questioning really why you made the decision you made, because that's why we have you to... If we're going to do that, we don't need you guys, we'll make those decisions. So as far as I'm concerned, you make those and we just stamp. The real need for us to approve all grants, two reasons. One, because it is money controlled by the county that we have to approve. And the second is we're required by the state to see all grant requests, not to judge the worthiness of those. You've got to make sure that we don't have two competing entities in the county going for the same money, in which case we are obligated then to choose one to submit rather than letting both submit. So I would say rest assured, most anything that you bring to us, that your board has decided you want to go for, and there's funds available to use that for, that we're going to support you on that. So unless you guys have a question for Michael on what all those tests do, then I don't see a reason for you to have to say, I know you've got other meetings to get to. I appreciate you coming in, but why don't we go ahead and take care of that business while we're here? I'd make the motion that we...
Okay, go ahead. I'd say I'd make a motion that we approve the grant that has been submitted by the LCC.
And I'll second that.
All fair and sound.
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
All right, now we'll get into our regular business. We have minutes to approve from October 7th.
I make a motion to approve minutes for October 7th.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have payroll to approve, and we have two. Our normal payroll of $263,017.91, and then the Union Hospital Security Payroll of $1,428.80.
I make a motion to approve both payrolls as presented by Chris.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What date did it?
2025.
Mike, I have a birthday Sunday, because you got...
Okay, thank you for telling us that.
You still celebrating this?
I am. As long as I remember which one it is, I'm gonna be okay.
There's one right there.
All right.
That'd be more of a reason to celebrate.
Yeah, that's true. You know it's going, when you're a little kid, you ask them what your birthday is, it's my... I'm nine and a half. For old people, you're like, "I'm 74, almost 75," kind of thing too.
I'm gonna probably usually have to ask my wife, "What's your birthday?"
Is this 41 or 42?
Yep. All right, we have several things to get to here. I'm going to...
We have to start claims.
Yeah, claims.
Oh yeah, okay.
The payable council payables.
We have to approve the claims, and then we have to approve the accounts payable. Okay, so we got any motions here?
I make a motion, we approve the accounts payable claims in the amount of $143,993.91.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right. We don't have any claims, so...
No, we don't have any listed.
Okay. Okay, so we have several things here, new business to get along the way, but I asked a guy to come, again, like the Chief of Police there. We have some issues going on at the jail, as you know. That jail is over 20 years old now, so I was just there when it was built. I can't remember what it was. Matt, do you remember what year it was built?
96.
96, so okay, so it's right on 30 years old. I was under the belief that copper tubing lasted forever, but it does not. So we have some major issues with the jail with the copper tubing. It's going to have to all be replaced. So I asked Matt Steckley, who has been doing the specs and the bidding on these jobs for us, to come and tell us where we are, because it's going to be startling where we are. So let's let him come up and get that done, and then we'll get back to our normal, normal pattern of business. I've already spoken to a council member about this, and so we know where we are.
Oh, I thought there was a chair over there. No worries.
Just drag one over your step on there if that works for you. You stand wherever you want to be.
Oh, thank you.
I'll switch it.
There you go, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, yes, absolutely Commissioner Reese bringing up. Wanted to get together with you guys instead of popping in last minute here today. Update on other projects, so the jail exterior, all that was left was the underground drain tile into those boxes. That's all 34 completed, turned out really, really good. We need rain, so all that's left is grading and seeding. So we've got pure soil over the piping, which we're leaving like that. We want to get some rain.
Seven.
Yeah, I mean, if we get in there now and make it look pretty, by next spring, you're going to have these really nasty divots. So it's, we're in a drought, there's not much rain going on, not much rain in the forecast. So one, this recently came up, do you, as a board, we're getting late in the year, I think we're going to get a nasty cold snap, and it's just going to stay like that. Outside of maybe 10 out of 10 aesthetically, it's just a little amount of dirt where they go out to the boxes. Are we okay with chill? Let's get into spring, let that settle, throw some seed and we're good? Or wait for rain, grade it, seed it, no matter what? I think at this point, we're going to have to seed again in spring, being so late. So feedback, let's start there on that. What do you guys want to do?
November 1st is pretty much a deadline on it. It's just going to get eight and everything else. I have no problem holding a small amount of retainers.
Retainer, correct.
I would rather get the guys paid for what they've done. We can't control the weather for what they've done. Hopefully retainage and have it seeded and hardly rake run over it, some seeding down the straw possibly in the spring.
Easier to take little amounts of down than to fill many of it.
Yeah, and the balance too with that contractor is 15, so if you guys want to vote or need to vote or approve, I would say just hold five, if you're okay with that.
That's, as long as you feel like the...
I want it to be...
Five will give them enough incentive to come back.
I've learned through the years that I'd rather hold more than they want, but I know they're going to come back. I guess just, they may not like it, but you go too small, it's oh well, and then we're stuck with...
That's why I say that, and if these two guys aren't comfortable with it, I've messed around enough, seen leveling.
I don't want double work and where we're at in the year. We've got some paint, leftover paint that the guy who did the exterior, he's going to come and get it. The jail matron's got a couple areas of touch-ups that she saw, depending on the sun, so he's going to touch that up. So yeah, pretty much that long project, but we're there, we're done. I will inform...
As long as these two agree with it, I have no problem.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, so I'll update them. Moving over to the next jail highway, jail highway, highway garage roof. So you've got the barrel sloped roof. That, I'm waiting on one more quote. I wanted to do at least three. Multiple have received, I did a full spec RFP on it. Multiple eyes have looked at it, and just getting people interested at this point, it's kind of like pulling teeth on my end. I've got to make sure they're competent, qualified, just not anyone's going to be able to do that. And then who is competent, hey, are you interested? So that's...
Let me tell you where we are on that, just so you understand, because the rules have changed, the way we understood the rules. We were told once, in fact, we were encouraged by the Association, Indiana Association of County Commissioners, that we should move all that money out of ARC into revenue shortfall, which we did. With the understanding we could spend it as we needed, when we're no longer under deadlines. Now, the talk from the state is that we still have to be have those monies, not just obligated, but contracted by the end of the year.
This year.
Yes, here. So if we're going to replace that roof with ARC funds that we have remaining...
There's no issue. This is literally like a week to... Yeah, this isn't something that I'm...
Why do you know that we need to have a contract?
We have to have a signed contract for it.
So yes, by no doubt about it, I'll get these quotes, we'll get it to you, and at least get a contract in place. There's no issue with that timeframe. Yes.
Susan and I go Friday to that meeting, so we'll know this week for sure what our rules are.
And that may impact also the copper you're going to be able to tell us about.
Yeah, that's a big one.
At least a year's worth of some portion of that, because we want to use some of those funds, at least for that as well. And so we would have to have some contract in place of that too by the end of the year. At least some portion of that anyway.
Let's do a deep dive on that. Give me one second. All right. So did a, I emailed the board, the RFP was specs direction. It was a pretty robust RFP, I don't know if any of you guys took, opened that PDF, but it was really well done. Being in that jail for a couple of years, that jail was built, designed by an architect that basically said like, no one will ever need to get to this one since it's built, ever. So I knew, let me do a really good RFP. And normally I do my tours one at a time. I like to just one contractor at a time, being it's the jail, respecting everyone's time in the jail, let's all get in. So three parties, there was a really nice party between all of us there. Sheriff's staff took us through and pretty much went, went the way I expected it to. So I did the RFP, several safeguards, copper's volatile. I said that the Board of Commissioners, I don't know if you guys are even aware of this, but a good safeguard that we will procure linear copper direct. It's on you and your bid to do, we're replacing valves, we're adding a lot of isolation valves, so if we ever have to shut water off, it's being done in much smaller sections instead of half the jail. But the valves, the fittings, that was on the contractor, but linear pipe was direct buy. However, we set that up, but there's no markup on this linear pipe. If we need a couple trucks to deliver it, because it's in, you know, 16-foot sections, we'll deal with that, but we're not dealing with markup on linear pipe, it's high enough. Preliminary numbers on copper linear, you are somewhere in the area of $100,000 to $125,000 in copper alone for this project. The, also in the RFP, I said that all copper is to remain at the jail. The contractor is not allowed to take that off-site and scrap it due to the price of copper. You as the Board of Commissioners, the sheriff, whoever, you're going to have a very nice pile of copper, and you guys do whatever you want with it, but in my RFP, that is to stay on-site. So did the walkthrough. The building was really built like without in mind if we have to service this or replace this. I'm under the impression, so two things after doing some due diligence and meeting with the sheriff, not bringing up old news, but here's the why. No, copper should not fail at this scale after 20, 25 years. It just should not. My impression, which it's my opinion alone, there's nothing factual yet. I'm thinking whoever was awarded that possibly used type M. Type M is the thinnest copper you can get. I'm thinking there was some type M used, and maybe no one caught it, someone 30 years ago trying to save some money. I haven't seen copper fail like that. I have multiple pictures, they're saving the fittings as they break over there. I mean, it's done. And then more importantly, I was told that a former sheriff, I don't know what year, how far back, a former sheriff did not like buying salt. He didn't believe in salt or a softener, and didn't thought it was a waste of money. So your guys' jail went, and I don't have the name of the sheriff, let alone the years, I'm just hearsay, that that jail probably went 10 years without any salt running through. There you go. So that's probably the main culprit. That makes sense. I found that out after I said that they use type M. So either way, at least we have a why. So now let's get into the gist of it. That this is a very large project, meeting with the pros, really doing a deep dive on this. Preliminary numbers came in. Basically, I just told everyone involved, hang tight, I got to meet up with you guys. Here's where we're at. I had a, I've got three quotes. There was an extremely low number, to the fact that I've never had a variance of that low. I mean, I do the walkthroughs, everyone sees the same thing, hears the same thing. Now, that jail, if there was ever to be a variance, that would be it. How each, you or me looking at it, I think it's much more difficult than you. But either way, this number was not normal in terms of low. Did some qualified commercial plumbing contractor, did some digging, kept probing. I wasn't getting my answer, I'm just trying to, and I let them know, if you are awarded this job, there are no change orders. I don't care if you lose 200, 300 grand in the red, you are doing this job for that amount. Are you okay with that? And then the truth came out for, and I won't divulge that company's name, but Matt, if the bulk of the employees have a valid Mexican driver's license, that's valid in Mexico, was that, will that work? There we go, that's why he came in so low, and I finally got it out of him. So now we're to the other two. And so basically, you're looking at a million dollars. We're looking at a million dollars with you guys buying the copper. I was told that if we, and I did some, on the backend corresponding this, if that was a new jail today, and unbuilt, and a plumbing contractor needed to install all that copper without blinking in either 600 or 700. If they were to give a GC a number to do that jail right now without everything being built, and how do we even get to that? It'd be 600, 700. So the numbers came in like way nasty. And when you do the walkthrough, you really get it. You really, I mean, you just understand that it's really going to be nasty trying to get all that out. I wanted to meet with you guys today on, obviously, I think that the best way to go about this is to break this into sections over the next year, two years. We've got six leaks so far. So in the last year or two, we've got six actual leaks that 24/7 service, come, shut the water off, you know, we've got to get this leak fixed.
I confirmed with Matt that it has to be copper, it can't be PECs or...
I was going to say PVC or anything like that.
And so I talked to one of the council members, Roy, about that as well, because Roy questioned that too, whether it could be that. But I already asked Matt about it, and Matt said it has to be copper. Roy talked to the attorney clutter, he's working for Boone County. Boone County's doing jail also, and they're doing copper, they have to do copper as well. So as I understand it, has to be copper.
And this, I mean, you have tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of gallons of water. That's not like your house. I mean, this is heavy, it's like a hospital. I mean, the water you guys use there between your laundry, your kitchen, all the cell blocks, there's a lot of water being used.
So we don't have a choice in that?
Yeah, and a lot of large copper. I mean, a lot is 2, 3-inch, 4-inch, third... And then it all has to be re-insulated. The, basically, as we were doing the walkthrough, the entire ceiling grid has to, throughout the entire jail, has to be brought down to even follow the pipe. Some of the pipe, I mean, is 16-foot up, and you maybe have two feet, once you get up 16 feet to, just everything we looked at, and all the cell blocks, they have these massive steel panels. All that plumbing goes behind the walls, well, because it's a cell block and secure for the inmates, you've got these huge steel panels that have to come off in sections to try and crawl in there. So what it came down to is, yes, it can be replaced, but like picture just the nastiest existing field condition. So I just said, stop, everyone stop, I want to get before you guys. Do you want to break this into five sections? I'll literally go back onto the drawings, and we'll literally break this into five, into three. What do you guys kind of want to do here? And I knew it was bad, but once I myself got on this ladder and we're looking, it was just like, this is bad.
Is there any way we can get ahead of it and try to figure out, anticipate where the worst problems? Does it seem to be worse in certain areas, or just hit and miss everywhere?
No, yes sir. Paradically, just where, it's going to leak wherever it's going to leak.
Yes. Yes, the nice part honestly is, you guys have committed to doing this, it has to be done. What's nice is now we have a presence. We now have a presence on-site. We're doing, even if we're doing section A and there's five sections, if we get a leak, we got plumbers there on-site. So I think the rapid, oh no, we're mobilized to, hey, there's a leak there, that, stop the whole thing, prioritize that. And the other thing is the shut-offs that are there were lacking. At least if I was to design the building, I think there should have been far more isolation valves. And what isolation valves are there are corroded or gummed up, and won't even spin or won't even seep. So it's just like, how do we go about this without disrupting U of Main feeds? U of Main feed, so it's like, for us to add isolation valves, we got to shut the water off and kind of almost initially get 10, 15 plumbers on-site within 24 hours to even, it's...
The reason I would ask this is you said you thought that there was possibly some thin copper used to try to save money. Did you really verify that?
No, and that is, that was before I found out about the softener. I'm just saying that, yeah, Commissioner Reese, when he first mentioned it, for the age of that jail, everyone who's heard about this has said the same thing out loud, even if you don't understand plumbing. Eech, that should go a lot longer. I initially said that would be a case.
You didn't find any?
No, no, and I will, once we start pulling some insulation off, I'll take a look. It might be K like it's supposed to be. But if I find M, you guys will be the first to know, and I decide from there. But I don't, that is, very careful Commissioner with me saying, I found out about the softener, but I'm just saying, that is of my own initial why did this fail? So I don't, I'm not looking to get anyone in trouble yet, let me confirm, yes.
Any recourse on that Nick, if there is, inferior materials were used? We got to look at the contract while this...
That's always the starting places, was there a contract, what did the contract say? But then...
30 years, is it?
Right, I mean, how many years?
30 years ago it was built.
I can't imagine that there's warranty on that long, yeah.
But my thought, the reason for asking is, can we get a handle on it? If there is in there, rather than K, when you get into it, if you found all that and done it first, you would know that it's most likely the thinner stuff would fail first, if you had a way of identifying.
At this point, there's so much there that that would be more like, as we're doing our sections hate, because normally it's scribed on the pipe, if it's 30 years and we can't even see it. But again, I don't say that to look for ammo on anyone. I just, that was my first, but there was, I did hear that a sheriff did not use the softener for a long time, and that really, far more than M, that's the cause of premature failure.
One of the things we had talked about, and I talked with one of the council members about this too, obviously, we don't have a million dollars laying around to take care of this project. He agreed, as we had talked about, probably breaking it down over three years. We could probably let's look at a plan of a phase of three phases. And we would probably have to leave that, you suggest, what, you and the sheriff decide, what dirt are we going to do, and what sequence, and how that would work out? That would affect your RFPs if they go out, so whatever you need to do on that, if you guys are in agreement to look into three-year, three-year phase on that.
I think that's the right...
Even with the ARC money, we just don't know at this point how much we've got. But like you said, a million dollars, like just...
What I can do, sir, is hit this hard and fast to get Phase 1 at least under contract by December 31st. Like what I have to go through, that's on me, not on you guys, I've always...
And if we commit some of that ARC money to that Phase 1, we could do that by the end of the year, and the rest of it would just be on the council and general funding.
Yes, sir.
Then do that then.
That puts me under a nasty timeframe, but I'll get you guys there. I'll get some under contract.
Makes them come through with numbers too quickly, so.
I ain't going to have an issue with that, it's just to literally now schematically and design-wise break this down, but yeah, I'll, we're end of October. I'm going to get you guys, I got two months to where you guys need to paper, I'll get you there.
In summary, I don't want to take more time than we need to. In summary, I think they're saying that we know we have to do it, and we're looking to do it over three, over a three-year period.
Yes, sir.
If you design your searches with that in mind, does that make sense then to do it? That way, do you guys? So you're good to go?
Yes, sir, and then let me take a look, we'll do some revisions. I'll be in touch with you guys on the ins and outs of doing a three-year, and we'll just make it to where I'm not, no one else is coming back, I'm not coming back. Like we'll just kind of figure out this agreement that, hey, you guys are going to do this now, and just consider it done three years from now, outside of here's where we're at, approve or don't approve. But yeah, I'll run with a turnkey over. I'm not going anywhere, I'll be around three years from now.
Appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Matt, thanks.
Okay, folks, ARC was delayed, but those things have just come up all of a sudden that we had to get lined up. Now let's go back to the regular agenda that you're looking at. So in our new business, we have a service agreement with Purdue.
Do you remember what we paid last year?
I didn't remember.
I don't know if this $127,000 is close to last year or not. The extension's not here, I don't see anybody.
I can't remember either.
I can't remember the number, but... It is what it is, we got to have that program.
Not much change in it, not many other options. So I guess that being said, I make a motion, we enter into the agreement with Purdue, extension for $127,510.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. All right. Ryan Laniger, is that the way you say that, Wellspring?
Loniger.
Loniger, okay.
Yeah, good German Swiss name.
Yeah.
So I believe you guys have most of my materials, but I wanted to make sure you had all of them, so I printed some more materials. You as well. Beth has been wonderful to work with. A few months ago, Glenn and Amanda Harold contacted me in Wellspring and said, hey, we'd like to install a solar panel system. And we figured out exactly what they wanted. They're looking for a system where they will have electricity no matter what. So if the grid goes down long-term, they will still have electricity. They have a 23-year-old daughter they care for that has some serious medical condition that she needs electricity and cooling specifically for. This system is a residential system, there's no commercial use at all. In fact, the system will not export to grid. All the electricity will be used on the property. So it's zero export, there's no interconnection with the RMC. I stopped by the RMC to talk to them today to let them know how the system works, and explain it a little bit to them. There are 34 solar panels on a ground mount, so I included a picture of a ground mount, right? The inverters are solar converters. They have a zero export feature where you can set them for zero export. We're actually going to set them physically so it's impossible to export using the inverters. The inverters have three inputs. They have a solar input to accept electricity, they have an input from the grid, and they have a generator input, so you could have a portable generator or GenSat send electricity into the inverters to charge the batteries. And run a critical load. Um, the Harrells do not have a generator right now. So we're planning on using the gen input into the inverters. For the electricity actually from the grid, which means you just physically will not, the units will not export back into that line. And because you never want your solar panel system to, to export electricity into your generator, you burn it up and destroy it. So there's no export of electricity there.
I want you to understand, Luke's understanding as well, we are not at any point saying that we are opposed to ever exporting, ever having commercial capacities. We just haven't reached that point yet. We do not have the ordinance in place that we've been highly recommended by the state to have in place. I have met with several counties along these lines about what ordinance that we should. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We don't need to have our attorney right ordinances. We don't, we're talking about, you have to research all that. So we're trying to accumulate that. We need to step it up and pick it up because we get, you get more pressure on that. Luke, you know how many panels your mom and dad have?
Oh gosh, it's probably was thirty.
Really? Cause I, I thought thirty-four sounded long. I, I got a call from the assessor today that according to the state, that size of, of, they may have to. Even though they don't export to become commercial, they may have to assess the property at a commercial. Does your mom and dad's property assessment change from residential to commercial?
It's kind of funky because thirty-five years ago was like, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's like twenty-two now. Their efficiency jumped a bunch because I got some side for me. It was half.
Cause she's being told by the state that at a certain level, and she didn't recall what that number was, but she thought we were at that number pretty close. Thirty-seven, I think is the number she thought. After that point, they're required by the state to assess that as commercial property, even though they're not exporting commercially. Is that, you ever heard of that?
Uh, there is an Indiana law that, that a property owner can file with the county that protects against property assessment for the solar. So there's exemption for property tax assessment for residential. So if you are a commercial business, yeah, it's, it's different. But if you're a private citizen, it's residential solar, there's actually an exemption form. Which your parents should fill out and, and give to the county assessor.
See, those are the things we need to learn. Cause we, this is a whole new game for us as well. And I don't want the impression ever get out Luke was concerned about. Now I know Luke says he's, since they left him on the bus years ago, I've known Luke a long time. We're not out to impede anybody. We just got to make sure we do this right when we do this.
Absolutely.
There's no going back. Once you've done something with someone. So you got to make sure you got all the ducks in a row and everything's going right.
And I was, I was coming today to kind of open that discussion about how we can move forward with their project. And still you guys can do what you need to do as far as.
We have talked to a couple of other solar companies as they came in. I can't give them the names. I don't recall. They were going to send sample ordinances that they have dealt with with other counties. We have never heard anything from any of them. Do you have such access to such ordinances that counties use that make it able for you to do your job and for us to do our job at the same time? Those are the things we need to see.
Yeah. So, uh, we are from Wellspring. We're in Chippewa, Indiana. So we're in La Grange County. La Grange County just redid their, um, their ordinances, um, their UDO and it was just approved. In fact, I had a, a ground mount project that we were waiting for the UDO to be approved. So we didn't have to go to variance. And so as soon as it was approved, then we were able to pull the permit.
Do they have restriction between commercial and residential? Are they allowed to do commercial if they're an export?
You can do commercial. There's a distinction between commercial when you're using it for self-consumption. So if you're a large factory, you use a lot of electricity, you're using the majority of it for self-consumption. And you send some extra back into the grid and get a bill credit. That's completely different than a feed in tariff. Feed in tariff is you, you build your system and all it does is export into the grid and you're selling the electricity to the electric company or electrical provider. All right. So that's the large solar farms that have investors that have millions of dollars and want the tax thirty percent tax credit. And want fifty acres or a hundred acres or two hundred acres to put solar across. That's a feed in tariff. And you have to be a pretty big engineering company and you have to have a whole lot of money and you have to have more than four people on your install crew. Cause that's what we have. We have four people on our install crew. We never, we never dream of doing a solar field, right? We do residential and commercial. So we do some small commercial as well. Um, so we look, I'll look at self-consumption. So where the resident, the person or the business is going to consume most electricity.
And that's why we don't want to impede. We don't want to impede residents as providing for themselves. And we have to just protect ourselves. That we don't get even any back sale coming in until we figure out how we're going to do this.
Do you know in their ordinance, did they put a percentage of what they was allowing the feed back in the ordinance? Was there actually a percentage?
I believe it's just whether it's a feed a tariff or the size. So like if a worker can show, hey, this is how much electricity I use. This is the size of my system. The utility companies like Indiana, Michigan, um, the RMC, they won't let you go above a hundred percent. They don't want more than a hundred percent of the electricity that, that's being used to be produced. Cause they only want a little bit of excess. They want most of it to be, um, to be consumed. All right. So I would have to send you that. I know my project engineer Jason worked closely with the, the planning commission as the new UDO came out. And they had several meetings along the way to where they had public input. Um, but yeah, we could, I could help.
It would behoove you to help us do that. Is that something you can do to us? Can you send that stuff to us?
Yes, I guess you're going to do UDO. I believe it's online now or I can get a PDF version of it.
Luke, you were shaking my head. Did you have a different percentage there?
I actually kind of came up with a list I want to present to you guys because I'm with an agreement. Let's keep the commercial out, but still allow there is intentional. I think what you guys have done so far is you've attempted to do that, but you threw a big net and we caught everything. We put limits on the total power produced, um, percentage of your parcel that can be covered by solar. Cause if you buy two hundred acres, they want to cover all of it. Um, max system size, total earnings from a year. Power must route to the home, then to the grid. So kind of forcing the home to be the middle point. Must be owned by resident of Hart County. Uh, any extra power must be accredited as a bill credit. I think, you know, putting these in and you're going to have a hard time jumping through those hoops to try and get a commercial in. I don't think you could.
Even crediting, you're still needing in the commercial. That's what we can't, we can't allow that yet. I don't think the intent for many of us, I don't think was to keep the residents from what happened. And we have a lot of Amish who are, who have solar. So that's not the. None of them that I know have thirty-four panels or thirty-seven panels, but, but I don't know what the requirements are, how efficient they are. So that I, that I don't know.
So just to let you know, Wellspring, we are solar, but we also do metal manufacturing. So all the buggies you see in the area. They're leaf springs are manufactured at our facility. Right? So we do leaf springs for buggies. We do grills and grill cabinets. Um, we do custom racking for tool sets.
Can't you figure out a way on those springs to generate electricity as they?
Not at all. But Norman, the, the father of the two sons who now run the company, he's the one who figured out how to heat temper them. So they were still flexible, yet still strong. So we have a, we run completely off grid because we're owned by Amish family. We have a three hundred KW generator that could, could power your high school.
Personally, I'm excited about the residential use of solar. I, I would, I would look at that myself to do that.
We also have, um, thirty-six panels in a battery bank. And when we shut our manufacturing down for the day at two or three PM. Um, our front office runs on just solar and the battery bank. Um, so yeah, so you will actually, you will see the Amish with larger systems. As they start replacing their generators, because right now they're burning diesel or natural gas or propane to run their electricity for their businesses.
And I'm all, I'm all for that. That's fine. The only really resistance we get are from people that are worried that all the farmland is going to be sucked up. But, but to me, I can speak personally for me, if it's my farmland, if I want to choose to produce electricity instead of producing corn, I should have that option to do that on my land. But we get into a discussion about that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where you guys come in with the ordinance and the debate. With this system, it is, how many acres do you have, Glenn?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-six. I have twenty-six acres. This is thirty, thirty-four panels on twenty-six acres. So if you look at the very last couple of pages are the, uh, the site map. If you're looking at the site map, you can see the little itty bitty squares of the solar panels on a huge property of twenty-six acre.
Well, I'm guessing that you were Glenn and Amanda.
Yes, sir.
We would deeply appreciate any, as you go through this process, if you find ways, things you should, and you too Luke, find things we should have done differently. Or what we, you think we need to know, tell the next people that you need to look at this. If you don't mind sharing that information with us, we don't want to be a stomach block to you at all.
Thank you. Because my daughter.
Oh, we understand.
She's really sick and, um, it just came to our attention that we have, we have not covered this issue. That if we ran out of power, what would happen to her? And, uh, since it hit us and we realized it, we've been anxious.
Understand.
And, um, we're from Ashville, North Carolina and our families there and we see what they're going through. So, um, that man right there is a blessing to us.
Well, I hope he's a blessing to us. He's going to listen to us.
I mean, I want you to know he's.
It's a learning process for all of us.
On the money.
Why will you not talk to the people who know? I mean, I understand there are snake oil sales. I'm not saying you are. There are snake oil sales. We're not going to have to worry about that kind of thing. And that's why I want to hear from you guys, how, how you go through this process and watch.
I'm just thankful, thankful for him.
Good. Well, that's good to know.
He's knowledgeable. His customers reviews. I am a researcher. I researched him down to an article he wrote to get, see what kind of person he was. Found out what people thought of him because you know, this is a big unknown money for us. We don't throw money around. We got to take care of our daughter when we're dead. She's got to have money to survive. She's twenty-three years old and we can't waste it on just some snake oil.
Well, like we had press to tolerate someone telling me I can't do that on my property. If I'm going to find some other alternative on my property. I understand not messing with the grid and personal, I understand that. But on my property, it'd be tough if somebody tell me what I can and can't do on that. Long as I'm not affecting anybody else. So I would sure like to hear along the process how it goes. Everything, every bit of this.
You're welcome to come and see it.
I would love to go see it.
And, uh, just see how it functions. And you, you've got one too. You said you're.
And the reason that's important to us and his parents too, because what we get asked questions about those and why do we know? We don't do that. And so I have a good friend down Sullivan County. They put in some huge fields down in Sullivan County. He's having kind of, as a commissioner. And he's kind of having some second guesses now on that maybe we should have done that, maybe we shouldn't have done that, but they've already done it. We don't want to get in that boat where they've already done it now. Man, I wish we hadn't, you know, we, we need to take our time on this. But in the process of taking our time, we don't want to impede homeowners to be able to do what they want to do on their, on their property.
That's very good to hear. That's a blessing.
We unfortunately expect to do it right. And we got to find out how to do it right when we do it. So we can't, can't mess it up and come back and fix it later. We can't do that. So. Okay. I appreciate you guys. Now, unless you guys have anything or Nick, do you have anything, any questions on that? Now I'm more proud of you, I think, just.
I've been working with Beth, um, as far as steps for us to go forward with it. Like I have their, I have availability on our install crew scheduled for November fourth.
You've been told that we have moratorium in place. Probably what you've been told, that moratorium is for commercial, commercial, not for you guys.
So if he's not selling to the grid, it's.
Good to go.
We're not.
It's not commercial in our book.
Supply. Be able to go.
Unless the planning commission has some reason not to allow that. And I can't imagine what that could be. It's on your property. You're not affecting anyone else. But you don't really need anything.
We don't have to approve you to go ahead and do it. As long as you're not doing it for commercial.
Not doing it for commercial. And yeah, the, uh, actually your, your ordinance is written in nineteen seventy-six. Is that the last time updated?
Planning design, the moratorium was issued within the last three months.
Okay. So yeah, with the moratorium just being commercial, I don't think we even need a building permit to be able to install solar.
For tax purposes.
Yeah, you probably will still need to, but there's not anything standing in your way from that process, I guess.
So that'd be our between you and the assessor, how that, how that property is, is going to work. She said after a certain level, she's required by the state to assess it at commercial rates rather than residential. We have nothing to do with that. We don't know about that.
I'll get her the form.
Yeah. You'll, you'll still want to talk to the building people and the assessor and all of those people, but they needed to weigh in on the moratorium.
That's why you were here.
Just since you're here, let me say we're quite that moratorium came in place. We were advised by the state to do that. Montgomery County got in a struggle where the solar primary companies came in. They started making contracts. They, they started making progress. And then the county came and said, we're, we're not going that way. We're not going to do that in those areas. And so they sued the county. The county eventually won, but they advised to prevent that mess. Make sure you've got everything lined up before you go down that path. So that's where we are.
Sounds good. Sounds good. I will continue working with Beth then to move forward.
I look forward to hearing from you. See you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. I'll get you the Grand County's UDO. It's, it's rather detailed. And yeah, some, some of the ground mounts, the size of the ground mount. Um, once you reach a certain size, then it requires variance, um, which is just going to the variance board. All right. Elkhart County has a similar, similar, um, process, right? Where I installed, we installed a rather large solar panel system. Um, is a thirty-six, it's thirty-six KW. So that was about four hundred and fifty watt panels. So it was two solarx, six arc batteries. It was big.
Are you speaking English?
Luke's back there nodding.
It was eighty panels.
Okay. Eighty panels.
Eighty panels, right? So it's forty wide because there's one row of forty, another row of forty. It is, each panel is three and a half feet. So it's a hundred, a hundred and forty feet across the backyard. All right. The resident, the customer I had had a, a home with a walkout basement and he had a pool that he has enclosed that he heats and cools year round. So his bill was seven hundred dollars a month, right? For his electricity. And, um, we installed his panels. We actually installed sixty-eight of them, right? And set it all up and started running it for about a month or so. And they called me up and said, hey, I bought an electric vehicle. Can I install twelve more? And those twelve more put us right at the edge of, um, we had to get special permission from Elkhart County and their planning commission. Because of the size of the array, the length of it. So you could put, you could put requirements on the size of the arrays too. Um, that may trigger a variance with the understanding that you should get approved because you're using it for self-consumption. But you're still going to need to get that variance because of how big it is. So you can do some things like that. Yeah.
I know with the commercial, we have to talk about setbacks. You got to talk about guards. So you can't see it and all those kinds of things as well.
On the commercial solar fields, you might as well just ban them and be away with it.
Yeah, you like that part. Yeah.
And just allow it for commercial, commercial self-use for businesses, right? Cause you want your auto shop and your local library and fire station. And every, you know, anybody who has a, a factory, you want to be able to run the factory and produce around electricity and save money on the bills.
Sunny day, save money. I understand. Just ballpark. I don't have a clue. I'll say it's thirty panels I need in my house. And you're going to set up nothing to operate. What kind of money are you talking about?
So grid type for residential, you're talking somewhere between ten thousand dollars and forty thousand dollars. Depends on how much electricity you use. The smaller homes, a lot of, done a lot of fifteen thousand dollar systems recently. If you're going to add batteries to it and you're going to run it as hybrid, so it has off-grid capability. You're starting at twenty-five thousand dollars and you're going maybe to seventy thousand dollars. Um, most of my homes are in forty, forty to fifty thousand dollar range. For residential.
How far away from the house can, can the balance be transition wise?
As long as, as far as you want to pay for that wire to get bigger and bigger. Because I do have one, one array that's seven hundred feet from the home. And it was seven thousand dollars just to get the electricity from the array back to the house. Because of the wiring and size of it. So if you're going to do like a Studebaker museum in South Bend, that's about a hundred eighty thousand dollars. And it's going to cover, it's only covering twenty percent of their electricity.
Thank you.
Thanks for the info. Good luck to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, next we have highway bids to, not open, I guess to approve.
Just.
Just a publication.
Supply dealers, correct.
Yes. So we have a letter to go out. So I guess we need to approve this, uh, being, being accurate and ready to go.
Buy Tim's materials, tires, tubes.
Yep.
Make a motion, we approved the notice, uh, the supply dealers for the county highway department.
Could also seconded.
Oh, fair say I.
All right.
We, you have a copy? Oh, you got it right there. You're already working on it. You're quick. And you're on top of stuff. Okay. Um, Stephanie's already been yours. That's all taken care of. I have a couple of things before we move on to Rico contract. Since we have to have this money committed by the end of the year, there isn't a project we talked about before, but I'd like to go ahead and get that committed down to speaking numbers. I would like to have the interior doors now of the courthouse refinished like the outside doors were. We just need one side. We just need the outside of the, of that second, second door going in. So I would like to authorize, um. So I would like to authorize, well, I guess, nothing till we get numbers, but I guess I just really need for you guys to know that I'm seeking bids on that, if that's okay. We got a, we got a letter out to the guy that did it last time.
Done it before.
Who's going to give us a number on those. And Don's got a plan of how we can do that, so if that's okay, we'll plan on doing that and then we'll commit whatever art money funds we have to do that. If that's okay to use our money for that, I'll plan on that. That won't affect the general fund that way to get that accomplished. There was something else I had. Give me just a minute here. Talked about the Thorpe Ford Bridge. Now, on the roof, it's not blown up on one part of the Thorpe Ford. You guys are still working, looking to decide that, you're going to be able to get that?
On the roof, no. He was supposed to have somebody, yes.
Okay, you're going to get somebody, I didn't know if you knew anybody to do that or not.
Actually, I had asked Luke when he was here at the last meeting, he was going to talk to...
What's his name?
You said his name.
Starts with a B, doesn't it?
Barney.
Barney.
So I guess we just need to send him a text or I may even have Barney's name.
Could you do that?
I'll get ahold of him, yeah.
And...
I'll write myself a note. I'll get ahold of Barney and see if he's going to take care of it.
And ask if we need just repair it or if we need to replace it?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you. All right, the burn ban is still in place because it's, as of right now, not looking like it's going to be.
Still dry.
All right, that's all the things that I had. Moving along to over this Rico, have changes to the original contract?
Yeah, there's another finisher and bridge unit needed by the EMS. It's going to raise the contract to another $12.70.
Okay, I make a motion, will you approve that?
I'll second that.
All fair to say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, do we have any department heads there?
It needs your signature.
Do we have any public company? Anybody here from the public wants to have a moment? Nope. Mr. Martin, officer, what's back there with you?
What?
Just spectating today?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I wanted to know his dad, it's on Ronnie Roberts cleaning up his property out on the 36, 036.
I don't know, on that, you'd have to talk to the plan, the plan commission on that.
It's, I don't know if you've, I didn't make the last meeting, Nick, but have they, did you make the last planning?
Yeah, I was there. What was the question? Sorry, I was...
The cleanup on 036 where they had been dumping, has that even been addressed? We've had...
I only know it based on names. I mean, if we know the property owner, I can tell you.
Oh, his name?
Ronnie Roberts.
I need you to sign that one. That's good for due.
Okay.
Bumblebee Enterprises, does that count?
Maybe. So that was like an ordinance violation then, right?
I don't remember the whole story. I think it was, it seems so.
Any ordinance violations I've received from the county have been filed, so it's whether Bumblebee Enterprises...
And we, of course, with Cassie not being there, we're going to have, things is going to be...
Yeah, I didn't know if you were aware that the plan commission, she passed away, she's second pass, and so we're in the process of changing people, so maybe the delay on pursuing those things, but just so you know.
I've talked to Beth and I went to the meeting at the Fairgrounds also.
Okay, did they cover it at the meeting?
Oh, yeah, they let me talk.
Oh, good, good, okay. And Nick said he's filed whatever he was requesting to file according to ordinance, so that's why he's checking on that, see where we are with that.
There's a court date?
What was the name, not Bumblebee, but the other name?
Ronnie Roberts.
Ronnie's got to sign one of the...
Yeah, it's set for December 3rd at 1:30. Oh, no, that's a different one, hold on. I bet they've just labeled that wrong. Would it be Ronnie Roberts?
Probably.
Yeah, December 3rd at 1:30, but they, instead of listing it out of the county, the courthouse listed it under the town for some reason.
So the court date is December 3rd at 1:30?